By a 3-0 vote, the City Council authorized and directed the City Attorney's Office to defend the cases of Kabir versus City of Elk Grove in Sacramento Superior Court, case number 23 CV 010715, and Hicks versus Kelly, United States District Court case number 223 CV 02391, as identified on the City Council agenda. Okay, with that, go ahead and adjourn special meeting at 6:05 PM and call to order the Elk Grove City Council regular meeting here again November 8th, Wednesday, at 6:05 PM. Mr. Kirk, could you go ahead and read the replay intro?
Indeed, Chair Suwen. This meeting of the Elk Grove City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T/Universe Cable Systems. The meeting is closed caption and webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Tonight's meeting replay is on Friday, November 10th at 1:00 PM and Sunday, November 12th at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. Previous meetings can be viewed online at www.elkgrovecity.org or youtube.com backslash Metro Cable 14. For members of the participating audience who may have personal electronic devices, please place them on silent mode during the meeting or on mute when you are not speaking. Elk Grove City Council welcomes, appreciates, and encourages participation in the City Council meeting. City Council requests that you limit your presentation to three minutes per person so that all present will have time to participate. City Council reserves the right to reasonably limit the total time for public comment on any particular noticed agenda item as it may deem necessary. Pursuant to Resolution Number 2010-24, no individual speaker concerning public comment may address the City Council for more than three minutes. If you wish to address the Council during the meeting, please complete a speaker card. There are the blue cards that can be found at the back of the chamber and provided to Assistant City Clerk Brenda Haggard prior to consideration of the agenda item. And with that, Chair Suwen, we will be moving into the roll call.
Great.
And I will start off that roll call with Councilmember Robles.
Present.
Councilmember Brewer.
Present.
Councilmember Suwen.
Here.
I will note that Mayor Spies is absent, or Vice Mayor Spies is absent, and Mayor Singh Allen is absent as well.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, we'll proceed with our land acknowledgement. We honor, respect, and acknowledge Elk Grove's first inhabitants, the Plains Miwok, who lived as sovereign caretakers of this land and these waterways since time immemorial. We commemorate and advocate for their descendants, the Wilton Rancheria Tribe, the only federally recognized tribe in Sacramento County, who endure because of the bravery, resiliency, and determination of their ancestors, tribal members, and leaders. Next, I'd like to invite, I see, Raina Tarango in the audience. If she'd lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Please join me in a moment of silence. I have an agenda before me. I'll look for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries for closed session.
There are no closed session items on the regular agenda. That will advance us to Section 4, the Presentations and Announcements. And that first item is Item 4.1, a proclamation recognizing November 2023 as Native American Heritage Month.
Okay, if I could invite the members of the Wilton Rancheria Tribe to come up, please. Nice to see you, Chairman. And you know, there's a lot to read here, but I just want to say it was an honor, you know, a lot of folks, Elk Groveans and myself, we were out witnessing your uncle and a member of the Miwok tribe, Mr. William J. Franklin, Sr., being honored with the statue in the Capitol Park. I hope you'll talk about that in your comments. It was quite an event, and so we were honored to be there. This is Native American Heritage Month in November 2023, and whereas Native American Heritage Month celebrates and recognizes the accomplishments of the peoples who were the original inhabitants, explorers, and settlers of the United States, since time immemorial, the indigenous peoples of this continent flourished with vibrant cultures and were the original stewards of the land. From generation to generation, invaluable cultural knowledge and rich traditions were handed down, which continue to thrive in the many and diverse Native American communities across our country and borders in the north to the south of us today. And whereas the first to live on this land, Miwok and Nisinnin peoples and their traditions and values continue to inspire the ideals of self-governance and determination that are the framework of our community. And whereas the Wilton Rancheria is the only federally recognized tribe in Sacramento County, after decades of hardship and struggle, losing then regaining their federal recognition in 2009, having land put into federal trust for the tribe by the U.S. Department of the Interior, Wilton Rancheria and their tribal members show strong resolve and perseverance. And whereas, under the guidance of Chairman Jesus Tarango, Wilton Rancheria has become a beacon for the continued fight to exercise their sovereignty as a tribal nation, their legislative advocacy at the state level has advanced bills such as AB 1314, the creation of the Feather Alert System in 2022, to combat the missing or murdered Indigenous Persons, MMIP, epidemic, and AB 338 adopted in 2021, that removed the Father Junipero Serra statue at the state Capitol, as I mentioned earlier, and replaced it with the statue of Miwok and Nisinnan Dance Captain William Bill Franklin, the first California Native American on the state Capitol grounds. Now, therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Elk Grove hereby proclaims November 2023 as Native American Heritage Month in the City of Elk Grove and urges all residents to take the time to gain a deeper understanding of the diverse heritage of Native Americans, strengthen the preservation of Native American history, art, language, literature, anthropology, and culture, and renew awareness and appreciation, working as partners with Native Americans to build a sustainable and healthy communities. Congratulations. I know that was a mouthful, Chairman, but it certainly, it's been a long time coming, so.
Yes, no, thank you for having us here today and, you know, I have some stuff here prepared, but you know, you talked a little bit about, you know, kind of what happened yesterday, and it was a beautiful day yesterday. And I think, I don't think too many people are really looking at how the magnitude, I would say, of what took place yesterday on Capitol grounds in the state. And so for us, you know, I think everybody could go back to those times in 2020 and 2021 and the things that were happening. And for us, being the Capitol, being one of the Capitol tribes, right, when you say, and we say it with a lot of pride in that we're the only federally recognized tribe in Sacramento County, and what those obligations come with, or what that comes with, is our obligations to make sure that, one, you're taking care of that land, but also the people. I think sometimes people forget, it's the part, taking care of the people is part of that. And so for Wilton, it's a big obligation for us to take care of our homeland, which is here, Elk Grove, but our region is vast, and the Capitol is one of those places. And when you, when you talk about the stuff, and I won't get into that, we don't have to, about who Junipero Serra was, and I'm sure he was a champion and a role model to some people. Myself, being a native man, I'm also a Catholic, and so for what that man represented as a Catholic man, there's no way that I would stand for what he did today, in today's times. And what he did then was then, but for us today, you know, we should be talking about the true histories here that took place in this state. And the removal of that, there was an opportunity for us here, being the Capitol tribe, to try to gather some other tribes and get support to, instead of, you know, having something like that there, let's put something for us. And again, something that I wanted to make sure I'll say here, and I highlighted it yesterday, that the honoring of Bill Franklin wasn't to just put the Miwok and Nisinnan people on the map. You know, it was in my words yesterday that there's a Bill Franklin in every single tribal community here in this state. And it was a man who, it was a man, and I won't get emotional, who was Indian when it wasn't a good time to be Indian. And I don't have to talk about what that means, you know, but we know what that means. And for him to be a young man and to have been chosen in the early 1920s to be this leader, you know, he took that with a lot of seriousness. He's a, he was a person, I would say, that had to go and endured boarding schools. You know, he was a student at Sherman, where he was with other tribal leaders that I mentioned yesterday, too, who also did the same things that he did. So I'll, I'll just say that it was a historical day yesterday, but Wilton Rancheria, we take it upon ourselves as our responsibility to be a part of that change, when you talk about that change and changing the history, right? Or not changing the history, but telling the true history of what took place. And I think sometimes the things that we do, like yesterday, you know, we're told that we're trying to erase history. We're not trying to erase history. We just want to make sure the history is told correctly and through our lens as well. And typically, that lens is the conqueror and not the conquered. You know, and our people here, you know, my little cousin here, she's a, she's an example of, we're the ones that didn't kill. And so she wants that history to be told, and she should be told that history. And her children, her same age, should also have that same history so that they know how to play with each other, they know how to interact, and they know how to build a better community for all of us. And so with that, I'll, I'll leave that there, but it was definitely a beautiful day. There's a lot of stuff that we have, I think, on our website that if you didn't, if you weren't able to see it or witness it, there's a lot of stuff there. But the reason why we're here today, you know, I just want to start off by saying, you know, Thongi Komo to you, Sergio, Rod, and Darren, we appreciate you guys, the City Council of Elk Grove for welcoming us here today. I think you guys know my name is Jesus Tarango, Tribal Chairman of Wilton Rancheria. And I'm joined here today by one of our council members, Antonio Ruiz, and so I want to thank him for being here today. You know, our council positions aren't full-time positions, so he's taken away from his time and his family and bringing his family, so.
We know the feeling.
Thank you for being here. You guys know. But on behalf of our tribe, you know, the descendants of the first and stewards of this land, I just want to thank you guys, and I mean that, and not just say thank you, but truly thank you for recognizing November as Native American Heritage Month. It's good for us to have a month and not a day, right? We wake up every day being native, but it's good that we have our month. But resolutions like these, to us, they're more than just ceremonial, right? They serve as a commitment that we will continue to work together as a sovereign government for the recognition and betterment of all of our citizens and communities. We are proud of the relationships that we have built with the City of Elk Grove, the Elk Grove Unified School District, the Consonus Community Services District, and the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors, and we look forward to continuing to grow and expand our partnerships in the coming years. Native American Heritage Month serves as a reminder of the diversity and depth of Native peoples and how hard we've had to work and continue to work for recognition and visibility. It celebrates that despite over 500 years of attempted genocide of our ancestors, our culture, our traditions, and our people, we have not only survived, but we've thrived. And so again, you know, with that being said, you know, I just want to thank you guys for inviting us here today, recognizing this beautiful month, not only for our people, but all our people here. And we definitely look forward to the continued relationship we have with you and our city, and hopefully we could tell a good story, true story. And something that I always say is that I want people to use Wilton Rancheria and the City of Elk Grove as an example of a tribal community and another community coming together and seeing what good we could do working together. So again, Thongi Komo. I'll leave it to my council member if he wants to say anything, but.
Yeah, just, you know, M'chukus, Anuksekun, and I just want to say thank you, and we look forward to, you know, our continuing partnership.
Thank you very much. You know, you embody what is Elk Grove. I mean, obviously, Native American History Month, Wilton Rancheria Tribe was here before there was an Elk Grove, but your families, you, your, and your cousin, and everybody after you continue to be part of this community. And so I think it's beautiful that the relationship, the city and all of Elk Grove gets to see your story, hear your stories, and learn about your history. And so we appreciate that as well. So thank you.
No, maybe, might be a little too early, but you know, the tribe has some land, you know, near us in Wilton, and that's one of our, that's one of our goals, is to have our own community center and cultural center to where we could bring the people of Elk Grove out, especially our students, to teach them about who we really are, but have them to be on our land, and they could see the things that, you know, maybe our people did a long time ago. But I think one of the things that we'd love to correct is that we're still amongst you. I think sometimes people think of us as a past tense, that we're not here.
Right.
We, we're here. But that's one of the things that maybe next year we'll be doing this, maybe over there, or we could do something like that. But again, that's our commitment to our city, that I think it is our job, and your job as well, to sit down and have those conversations about the true history of what took place here.
Yes, sir. Look forward to it.
Thank you.
We have to come down and take a picture with you, if that's all right?
Absolutely, brother.
Happy Dovali.
Happy Dovali.
Both of them.
Happy Dovali.
Hey, we're gonna use two phones, so bear with me. First one is for our friends here. Okay, ready? One, two, three. Have one more, just in case. One, two, three. Wait, one more phone.
The grease off.
Okay, ready? One, two, three. One, two, three.
Moving on to the next item, I'd like to invite Gurdjatinder Randawa and the Sikh community to come on up for proclamation recognizing November 2023 as Sikh Awareness and Appreciation Month. I'm going to turn it over to my council colleague. Did you guys switch? Which one?
I haven't.
Okay, Councilmember Brewer.
Good evening, everybody.
Oh, hold on, Gurdjatinder, I want to.
So before you go, I have to go first.
But I do want to thank you for being here and presenting. And being a steward and commissioner in our city for many years, you've been a great ambassador for the Sikh community, and you've been a strong ambassador for Elk Grove for all these many years. And I want to thank you and acknowledge you for that specifically, because we've known each other for a long time, and I really appreciated your input and your advice. And still, to this day, I still appreciate that, because it's very rare you find leaders and friends that you consider family, and I definitely consider that for you as well. So thank you, and Happy Dovali.
Yeah, thank you very much.
And so really appreciate that. And so with this, I'm going to read the proclamation for Sikh Awareness and Appreciation Month for November of 2023. Whereas the City of Elk Grove, the state of California, and our great nation are enriched by the unparalleled diversity of our residents, and whereas Sikhs are the fifth-largest religious group by number with more than 25 million around the world, and estimated 500,000 Americans are of Sikh origin, and more than a third of the nation's Sikh population resides in California. And whereas Sikh Americans pursue diverse professions and walks of life, making rich contributions to the social, cultural, and economic vibrancy of the United States, including services members of the United States Armed Forces, and have made and continue to make significant contributions in public service, agriculture, medicine, trucking, science, and technology, and distinguish themselves by fostering greater respect among people through faith and service. And whereas the month of November is significant for the Sikh celebrations of Dovali, the celebration of the first guru and founder of Sikhism, Guru Nanak Deviji, in 1469, and installation of the Sikh scriptures as the final and eternal guru in 1708, and whereas today the City of Elk Grove seeks and to recognize the diversity of its community and afford all residents the opportunity to better understand, recognize, and appreciate the rich history and shared experience of Sikh Americans. Now, therefore be it resolved that the City of Elk Grove hereby affirms and proclaims November 2023 as Sikh Awareness and Appreciation Month in the City of Elk Grove, and asks the city, the community to contemplate and reflect to inspire ourselves individually and our society collectively to work towards a brighter future on this day, November 8th, 2023. So I want to congratulate you again.
Thank you very much. I personally want to say, you knows, you guys knows better than us, actually. Okay, let me start my speech. I prepared today. Lot of work. Good evening, everybody. My name is Gurdjatinder Singh Randawa, as you mentioned right now. I am the commissioner of the City of Elk Grove. I'm here with my fellow community members to proclaim November as Sikh Awareness and Appreciation Month, declared by the City of Elk Grove. First, I would like to thank the mayor, vice mayor, the council members for declaring the month of November as Sikh Awareness and Appreciation Month. Sikhs have been a part of American populace for over 130 years. In the U.S., the Sikh population is around 1 million now. You know, borders are open now. There are a lot of undocumented people living here now. Out of that, almost 50% are living here in California. From the time of their arrival in the late 1900s, Sikh men and women have been making notable contribution to American society. Early immigrants settled in the western frontier, where they played a major role in building America's railroad. Sikh Americans like Bhagat Singh Thand served in the U.S. military during the World War, and the first Asian-American congressman was a Sikh American elected to office in Sikhs are very successful in different fields. They serve here as scientists, doctors, IT, or other fields. Sikhs contributed to agriculture, business, hotels, trucking, et cetera. Suppose we talk about the U.S. Army, there are a lot of Sikhs who are serving as high-ranked officers. In U.S. politics, Sikh women and men are very much involved in the mainstream. We look different because of tying the turban. After 9/11, many Sikh Americans experienced discrimination in various places. So many of our community members were killed due to racial profiling, and many Sikh temples have been vandalized across the country. Even Sikh American elder have targeted by the hate violence. Sikh Awareness and Appreciation Month allows our community to be better known and to make us feel safe. Once again, the Sikh community is very thankful to the City of Elk Grove for declaring the month of November as Sikh Awareness and Appreciation Month. Thank you very much.
Yeah. We appreciate those words, Mr. Randawa, and we appreciate your service on the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Commission as well.
Thank you.
We'd like to come down and take a photo with you.
Please.
Here we go. Give us the kagi. On. On. It's important. We don't want to cheat of it. No, no. Okay. We'll let, we'll let these guys set off. I like the feeling. No one says we.
Thank you.
Come over here. Thank you. Sorry. Okay. We'll let, we'll let these guys set off. I like the feeling. No one says we.
Thank you.
Come over here. Thank you. Sorry. I need to be here the whole. Yeah. Okay. I'll come up like, if you can, maybe we can have some of those come in, it's a little quiet right now. Yeah. I got some video. Okay. Always a new video. Okay, here we go. Ready? One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. Thank you. You're all kind of good. Oh. Okay. Oh, you sent some video. Okay. Ah, okay. Always a new video. Okay, here we go. Ready? One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. Thank you. You're all kind of good. Thank you. I got some. Oh, you sent some video. Okay. Ah, okay. Always a new video. Okay, here we go. Ready? One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. Thank you. You're all kind of good. Thank you. I got some. Oh, you sent some video. Okay. Ah, okay. Always a new video. Okay, here we go. Ready? One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. Thank you. You're all kind of good. Thank you. I got some. Oh, you sent some video. Okay. Ah, okay. Always a new video. Okay, here we go. Ready? One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. Thank you. You're all kind of good. Thank you. I got some. Oh. Okay. We'll let, we'll let these guys set off. I like the feeling. No one says we.
Thank you.
Come over here. Thank you. Sorry. I'll push you. No, no. Okay. We'll let, we'll let these guys set off. I like the feeling. No one says we.
Thank you.
Come over here. Thank you. Sorry. I got some. 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 I'd like to invite Brian Gladon and Ian Huelde to come on down, please. And Councilmember Robles will be administering this one.
Let you guys get settled.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening. Global Entrepreneurship Month, that's a whole mouthful to say. But honestly, I think as a community, and as a city, and as a state, and then as a nation, we wouldn't be operating if it wasn't for a lot of entrepreneurs that took risk and chances, right? And it's a pretty unique day that we get to honor the week. So personally, I want to say thank you for this, and thank you for what you've done, and especially for putting yourselves out there, right? Because you guys assume risks that many of us wouldn't, or several different folks in the community wouldn't. So thank you for that. And I'll be reading the proclamation that we have. Global Entrepreneurship Week, November 13 through the 17th, whereas most of the new jobs created throughout the United States in the past decade have come from creative efforts and entrepreneur inventors and small business engagements in the endeavors ranging from micro businesses to large-scale ventures. Entrepreneurs have been the key source of economic innovation throughout our nation's history and a society, and has been improved because of the new ways of doing things that have been brought about, the innovation and incentives. Whereas Global Entrepreneurship Week occurs in the second week of November as it's the world's largest celebration of innovations, of jobs, and creations, and launch startups that bring ideas to life, drive economic growth, and expansion of human welfare. The Greater Sacramento Region Week, long celebration of Global Entrepreneur Week, encompasses dozens of local and regional events, each designed to highlight ideas to start and run a business, with events including large-scale competitions, teaching entrepreneurial skills in our region, high education institutions, connecting partners, potential collaborating with mentors, and even investors. Whereas the City of Elk Grove is directly supportive of entrepreneurs, inventors, and small businesses through numbers of programs, platforms, including Small Business Supports and Startups Elk Grove Incentives Program, which is helping to build the more initiatives and sustainable economy for Elk Grove. Now, therefore, let it be resolved that the City Council of Elk Grove hereby proclaims November 2023 as a Global Entrepreneur Month, and the days of 13th to 17th as the weekend Elk Grove urges all residents and opportunities acting upon them in spirited cultures and innovation, and creating in the 21st century jobs, a vibrant economy, and working in the region. And thank you for being here. This is a whole mouthful of this. But in all seriousness, just thank you for what you do. I think oftentimes, small businesses and owners and CEOs, we don't thank you guys enough. Again, the risk that you guys assume, and the hours that you put in. Everybody thinks because your business is successful, that you did it magically, and that isn't how it's done. It's what equity that you guys put on the weekends, after-hours, phone calls that you get, you know, 2:00 a.m. that something happened. And then, in addition to that, sometimes there's costs that comes on that you didn't even budget for, right? So we appreciate it. We celebrate you. And here in Elk Grove, we love small businesses, and we love startups. And we're going to invest, and we're going to continue to invest. So thank you for that. I should say that next time, other than the fucking.
Thank you very much. Good evening, council members. My name is Dr. Brian Gladon. I'm the entrepreneur-in-residence for the Carlson Center at Sac State. And Cameron Law, the executive director, and I want to personally say thank you very much to both the city and the council members for this recognition and proclamation. It's important because it shows the collaboration and commitment the City of Elk Grove has to entrepreneurship in the region, as well as startups in your local community. It's important to the center at Sac State because we are the hub for innovation entrepreneurship in the region. We bring together the cities, the counties, the investors, the accelerators, the incubators, the startups themselves, and we help educate them and connect them. And so groups like Elk Grove, the city council, and the programs that you guys have been doing, Pitch Elk Grove, Startup Elk Grove, Invest in Elk Grove. These are wonderful programs that are showing collaboration around the community, helping with economic development, not just for the region and Elk Grove itself, but for the actual owners, the startup and the founders. We want to say thank you for that, and we want to invite you and welcome you to all the wonderful things that you mentioned for next week at Sac State at the Carlson Center. November 13, Monday night, is the State of the Union address. So there'll be lots of folks there, and we hope that we see some of you there as well. And so again, just want to say thank you for this proclamation and recognition, and keep up the wonderful work you're doing in partnership with us and the rest of the ecosystem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council members. My name is Ian Ellis Huladay, and I'm here on behalf of Tiame Networks. I'm a wireless systems engineer, PhD electrical engineering. And on behalf of the whole team, we just want to express our sincere gratitude to the mayor, the vice mayor, and all the council members for the support that you have put in for this proclamation of entrepreneurship for all of us. This is very important to Tiame Networks because we feel like you are putting us out there on the map. And what a way to just showcase our product, which is wireless technology, to the world out there. And who knows, we will be the next Apple, the next IBM, the next Dell. And then everything, we would know that everything stemmed or came out from the City of Elk Grove. So also, Tiame Networks, as we all know, is a small business, and we are focused on wireless communications. Also, what we do is we have so many contracts with the DHS. We have contracts also with the USDA. So what we are doing is we are also extending our work to support agriculture in rural communities. We are also extending works to bring resilient technologies to the DHS as well. And all is coming from the support from the city, and also all that they have done for us as Tiame Networks. We do really appreciate the support, and we want to say that our breakthrough product, when it comes out, you'll find these sensors installed everywhere, where we can do crowd control, crowd monitoring. We can have IoT sensors everywhere, telemedicine, smart series. So we hope that this will bear fruit, and it will start here from the City of Elk Grove. Thank you so much.
I'd like to say something.
Yeah, please, go ahead.
So, yeah, no, Professor Gladon and Mr. Huladay, I want to thank you for being here. I want to thank everything that you're, both that you're all doing with the, and working with the city, and creating these generated partnerships, creating new synergy, and bringing innovation to the forefront, and making that investment here in Elk Grove. Because to have companies like Tiame Networks, you're showing that there is a market. There is a dream to build here. And to make Elk Grove your home is one of the greatest signs of complimentary service to the community that you're doing. I think what Councilmember Robles had mentioned is like, you are out there on the front lines, and you're putting your blood, sweat, and energy into the work. And some days, it feels like even though you have a whole team, you have your family supporting you, you feel like you're alone. But do you know that you have not only your family and your staff, but you have a whole community rooting for you and wishing for your success? Because as we do the startups, and as we have all of our programs to invest in Elk Grove, it shows that we do have that brain power and that capacity to help the whole regional, the whole region work, but more importantly, to help foster your dreams and other entrepreneurs' dreams come true as they take that risk into the unknown to make their dreams come true. So thank you again, really appreciate it.
Well said, council member. And just, I would just like to add on, Mr. Gladon, thank you for being here. Please keep training that next generation of dreamers and problem solvers. And Mr. Huladay, I apologize. We wish you the best of luck too in your endeavors. We look forward to seeing your products in the mainstream soon. Thank you. We'd love to take a picture with you as well.
You got it. Thank you.
Okay, move on to our next item. Diversity Inclusion Commission Annual Update. I'd like to welcome members of our Diversity Inclusion Commission. Good evening.
Good evening. So I'm Tina Leavout. I'm the Chair of your Diversity and Inclusion Commission. Tonight, I'm here to present our annual report. But first, I want to thank the city council for your continued support. And joining me tonight are a few members of our commission. I have Vice Chair Jessica Carter here. I have our commission recorder, Michael Hill. And then our newest member, Kelly Lee.
Hey.
No relation. So we originally started as the Multicultural Festival Committee, but our role expanded, and we serve as a resource to the city through our engagement with the community, and our recommendations and feedback to the city council. So in addition to the members that are standing here with me, here's our full commission. Last year, we supported six city council proclamations to highlight and recognize the diversity of our community. During Pride Month, we once again joined the city council in raising the pride flag here at City Hall. And this year, our commission supported Elk Grove Pride, a youth-centered event with vendors, entertainment, and resources. One of our major goals has always been developing a land acknowledgement, recognizing the heritage of indigenous peoples. And we were so proud when our city council adopted a land acknowledgement in September. In October, we honored Indigenous Peoples' Day for our third cultural connection event. We partnered with Wilton Rancheria to present a California tribal showcase. We had about 200 folks joining us, including a Girl Scout troop that came. Happy to report, they earned their badge, and they also danced during the event. So it was really great to see kids come out and join us. Of course, our premier event is the Multicultural Festival. This year, we had over 8,000 attendees. We also partnered with Elk Grove Speaks to provide a multi-use ADA-compliant space for various sensory inputs. This inclusive room welcomed all abilities, and was enjoyed by over 450 community members. Now, we didn't have time for this slide, and I think a couple of you were here last night when we celebrated Diwali, which is a festival of lights.
Yeah.
And this joyous event had over 400 attendees. And what was so wonderful about that event was that it perfectly represented the importance of celebrating the diverse cultures that make Elk Grove a city welcome to all. So looking ahead, we look forward to onboarding our new members. We also look forward to planning our next cultural connection, as well as the multicultural festival. And then we'll also be working to update the city's code of ethics. In closing, I want to recognize our members. We're all volunteers, and just the amount of effort and work and commitment that we all put in really makes this work great. I also want to make sure that we recognize the staff, because teamwork makes the dream work, and we have an amazing group of staff that work with us. We have Jody, who's a vit czar, who keeps the multicultural festival going. We have Sergeant Jason Jimenez, who keeps us well-informed. And last, but oh my goodness, by not least, is Kristen Lawrence. She's the person behind the curtain who really keeps us on track and helps us to be successful in what we do moving forward. So again, we want to thank you for your support, and we look forward to working with you next year. So that's our presentation.
Thank you. Well, right back at you, because, I mean, I look at all this work that you've done, and I think back, even before my time, if councilmembers Detrick and Hume and those, you know, before us were here, they would be so proud. And, you know, starting as the Multicultural Committee, becoming, you know, the Multicultural Commission, and then Diversity Equity Inclusion Commission, and the evolution that has taken place, and just all the work that all of you have done, getting the word out there about how we're a city welcome to all, and reinforcing that with the events that you held, with the things you brought forward, like the land acknowledgement. Thank you so much for that as well. Just incredibly proud. Anybody who is, we hear all these, I hear a lot of these great things, I'm sure my colleagues do too, about how Elk Grove, we feel so welcome. It wasn't that long ago when people would say Elk Grove is racist. And I don't believe it was, I mean, I never experienced that, so I don't feel like it was ever like that. But to see, hear things now that they rave about Elk Grove being a welcome city to all, it's really a proud moment. And you all should be proud of yourselves, of the work that you've done. I want to look to my colleagues if they want to make any comments as well.
And I want to say thank you for everything you're doing. It's work that people don't see in the community, but you do work for 180,000 of us. So thank you for that. Yesterday was so much fun. And one of the things that I noticed, and I think everyone else noticed, that if you looked around, it was so diverse. I felt at home. And this is what, like Elk Grove, and this is the type of feeling that we're continuing to progress and continue to do in Elk Grove, is to make it feel like home. And it doesn't matter your nationality, the color of your skin, or background, but it's making it feel like home and welcome. So thank you so much for the work that you've done and continue to do. And welcome to the Diversity and Inclusion Commission. And I'm excited to see what is to come, and I'm excited just for the work that you guys are doing in the future. So thank you.
Yeah, to see the DNI committee being a working committee with working commissioners is amazing because it shows that not only are you strong leaders, you're strong leaders for the community, for the city. 180-plus thousand people, and you're looking out for the best interest of the city. And we're showing who we are through our diversity. Seventh-largest city of its type with this type of diversity in the nation. And to have the care and compassion that you all show in your duties with the committee is amazing. And in seeing how past versions of the Multicultural Committee, how it started, how it's evolved. We've always had strong members who cared about Elk Grove and continue to care about Elk Grove, and looking for new ways to share the narrative of our city and showing how we are a city welcome to all is amazing. And want to welcome Commissioner Lee for being a part of the commission, and looking forward to great things from you, and you're working with a great commission like we have before us. And I look forward for the stuff we're doing in the future, especially on January 13, Saturday, January 13, two days before Dr. King's actual birthday and the march that we do every year in Sacramento. We're going to do an MLK breakfast. It's something I did as a CSD commissioner. We're going to bring that back. And seeing that you are all so passionate and ready to dive into this with myself and the city team is really heartening, because it shows that we are about walking the walk and talking the talk here in Elk Grove. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm hearing Councilmember Brewer's going to cook some pancakes. All right.
All right, Mr. Clerk, I'm going to toss it back over to you for the next item, please.
That is Section 5, our public comment. Members of the audience may comment on any item not on the agenda that is of interest to the public and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Each person will be allowed three minutes or less if a large number of requests are received on a particular subject. City council cannot take action on non-agendized items raised under public comment till the matter's been specifically included on an agenda as an action item. Members of the public desiring a response to a specific question are encouraged to contact any member of the council or the city manager at any time. Those audience members who wish to address a specific agendized item are encouraged to offer their public comment during consideration of that item. And we do have a few members of the public signed up, and I believe we've got the system set up for you.
Okay, yep, I see, thank you. I'll open the public comment opportunity, invite people to come to speak. And I see the first name on here is Kelly Lee, followed by Nikki Nguyen. Come on back up. Diversity Equity Inclusion Commissioner Lee.
Good evening, all, and city council. Thank you for having me here today. I'm so excited to share with you the fact that I'm on DEI now. I'm just so excited to share with you what I'm going to be bringing to Elk Grove, and to make us even more diverse, included, and that is the Lunar New Year Festival. I am here today to ask for our grant that I missed. And hopefully, with this grant, I'm sure you saw the Mid-Autumn Festival that we put back in September, and it was a hit. Everybody wants us to bring it back, and I just can't wait to make that an annual event, and the same thing for Lunar New Year. And I know probably Darren Soon, Councilman Darren Soon, know what it means to celebrate Lunar New Year. And so, like I said, every dollar makes a difference in all of our events. We do this for the community. We do it by volunteer. And so I'm just here to ask for a grant so that we can put this together. And I am excited to actually bring back our parade that we did when we did it in Sacramento City. And now we're going to try to bring it back to Elk Grove. So again, thank you for having me here, and hopefully we'll have your support and be in partnership with the City of Elk Grove. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And I'm going to also want to refer you to maybe Kristen Lawrence for the schedule that we do for our grants. Okay. Next speaker, Nikki Nguyen. And that's my last speaker I have signed up to speak.
Good evening. Thank you for being here today, councilmen, board, and staff. My name is Nikki Nguyen, President of CPALZ, Community Partners of Little Saigon of Sacramento, a nonprofit. I would like to request for a grant for our upcoming event. We understand we had missed the deadline, and we would like you to make an exception as this is our seventh annual Christmas toy drive. Our goal is 500 toys donated, and we give back to local nonprofits as well. One of the local nonprofits such as Ex Hope, which supports foster kids, and they're also in Elk Grove and the Sheriff's Department. And one of the other organizations last year that we gave to was Ball of Academy, which help underserved kids with sports. It's an event, not only a toy drive, but it's a community event that provides pictures with Santa, good food, 12 stations craft for the kids, games, hot cocoa, raffle, entertainment, and much more. Last year, Toy Drive was at District 56. Thank you to Mayor Singh, had donated us that. And this year, we get to do it again. Thank you, Councilman Rod Brewer. To host an event of this nature is about 700, 800 people that attended last year. We were really excited. That was our highest attendance. It's a true celebration of generosity and community spirit. The festive event brought joy to countless of children. It's heartening to see the impact that we can create when we come together. This year, with your support, we aim to expand our reach and ensure that every child in our community experience the magic of the holiday season. Your contribution to this grant will be the driving force behind smiles, laughters, and a sense of togetherness. Let's continue making difference in fostering the spirit of giving in our wonderful community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. With that, that's our last speaker. I'm going to go ahead and close public comment, and turn it over to Mr. Clerk for the next item.
I'll be Section 6, General Administration Information.
Good evening, council members. Jason Berman, city manager. Several items to report on this evening. First of all, I'm pleased to report that the city has been awarded a Safe Streets and Roads for All grant in the amount of $680,000 from Caltrans to develop a comprehensive plan to collect and analyze traffic safety data and conduct community outreach to improve local traffic safety. This will also put us in a good position to be able to compete for future grant opportunities for improvements to our roadways. The Enhanced Winter Sanctuary program opened on November 1, and there were 21 people staying at the facility as of November 6. I heard there's an additional person. I think we're up at 22 now, including many individuals who have a long history of homelessness in Elk Grove. Our homeless outreach navigator continues to contact others for referrals. Interested individuals may call 916-588-0304 to request information at a shelter assessment. The Elk Grove American Legion Post 233 will host the Veterans Day Parade this Saturday, November 11, starting from the Kasuna CSD Administrative Building at 11:11 a.m. and concluding at Elk Grove Regional Park. Streets will be closed from 9 to 1. See the city's website for additional information about the road closures and detours. Veterans Day is also a good time to remind our residents that they can honor community members who have served in the military through our Military Street have served in the military through our Military Street Banner Program, banners honoring local veterans, line Elk Grove Boulevard and Civic Center Drive between Big Horn Boulevard and Laguna Springs Drive. Learn more about the program, you can visit our website. Come have coffee with a cop this Sunday, November 12th, at Old Town Plaza. Officers from the Elk Grove Police Department will be available to answer your questions, connect with you over coffee from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. The city will launch its Send a Smile Program next week. This program, which started in 2020, has been extremely popular, sends holiday greetings to hundreds of Elk Grove seniors who could use some holiday cheer. Residents can pick up and personalize a card-making kit at Elk Grove City Hall, right across the street, beginning on Monday, November 13th. That includes a pre-addressed stamped envelope for an Elk Grove senior. Card kits are available while supplies last. There's a limit of five kits per family. The city's updating its 2019 Climate Action Plan called the Climate Compass to provide a framework for mitigating the impacts of climate change. Staff will host a virtual workshop next Wednesday, November 15th, at 6:00 p.m. to connect with the community and look at Elk Grove's greenhouse gas inventory, explore key climate hazards impacting the city, and help identify our vulnerabilities and strengths. You can register 210 to get more information on our website, elkgrovecity.org/cap. And just a reminder, with the rainy season right around the corner, the city does not allow residents to pile up leaves in big piles. We request that they help to clean, keep the gutters clear, keep the storm drains clear, but take those leaves and put them in your green, your organic waste carts. We don't have the big claw that picks those up, and if they just, they sit on the street, then they continue to get in our drain system and potentially create flooding hazards. Let's see. The city, Chamber of Commerce, and Explore Elk Grove remind residents to support Elk Grove businesses by shopping, dining, and spending local this holiday season. Take advantage of special deals and purchase your Elk Grove Local E gift card for use at over 50 participating locations in the city at supportlocaleg.org. So, the next city council meeting is December 13th. Because of the holidays, we skipped the second meeting in November, but there are a number of events between now and December 13th. We have the Gobble Wobble Thanksgiving 5K and Family Fund Run, which is November 23rd. We have the Old Town Elk Grove Dickens Street Fair, which is November 25th, the Annual Illumination Holiday Festival at District 56 on December 2nd, also the Holiday Parade of Lights that same evening. Lots of fun things happening in the course, over the course of the next month. And then finally, we have our holiday schedule, which shows City Hall closing this Friday in honor observance of Veterans Day, also November 23rd and 24th for the Thanksgiving holiday. Public Safety and Trash and Recycling Collection Services will operate as normal on those days. And that concludes my report. Happy to answer any questions the council might have.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments from my colleagues?
No questions.
Okay, Councilmember Brewer.
So, Mr. Bierman, I'm looking at what we do on the Military Street Banner Program. Are we, will that program be extended along Elk Grove Boulevard, or will it be mainly concentrated around District 56? Because if we have the perfect wave of families who are doing the banner program or wanting to have their loved one on there, has a plan been created to help make for that possible expansion and where that would be?
We've never had a need to date, but we'd love to have that problem, or we have the need for more street poles, and we could certainly expand that in the future. So, I think the program's working pretty well as of right now, but certainly look for opportunities in the future as needed.
Yeah, it's an amazing program, and I love how we're doing that here in Elk Grove, and honoring our veterans in a variety of ways, through naming streets and neighborhoods after them and everything, and having the banners is a nice symbol for that as well. Because it's like earlier this year, as you know, I went down to Porterville, California to have my father, my brother-in-law, and my two uncles honored with banners throughout the city, and Porterville basically did, like, every street throughout the city was like covered with banners intermeshed between an organized route. And that was, and they did that on Memorial Day. So, I was just wondering, because like sooner or later, when all of us contribute to it, it's a good problem to have. I was just trying to figure, wonder if there's any plans in the works to plan for that type of expansion when and if that happens.
Was that a question?
No, that was a statement.
Oh, okay, great. All right. There's no other comments. We'll move on to our consent calendar. I'm going to open up for public comment, see if there's anybody signed up to speak. And I don't see any sign up to speak, so I'll go ahead and close public comment, and council deliberation and direction. If you want to prove the consent calendar.
If there's no objections, I'd like to move items 7.1 through 7.11.
Second.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. On to the next item. Mr. Clerk, item eight.
Take us to Section 8, our public hearing, starting with item 8.1, which is a public hearing to consider an ordinance, many in the city of Elk Grove zoning map for the Treasure Homes Rezone Project.
Good evening, Councilmembers here for the CSD. Planning. The proposed Treasure Homes Rezone Project consists of a rezone from RD4 to RD7. No construction is proposed as part of the project. The project is related to the following agenda item 8.2, the Stathos Self-Storage Project. Due to state legislation that does not allow rezoning of residential property unless there is concurrent rezone that adds equal capacity, this rezone will accommodate the loss of units from the Stathos Self-Storage Project. The project site is located within the Laguna Ridge specific plan area on the north side of Vilby Road, east of Bruceville Road. The project site is currently vacant, and no buildings or trees exist on the site. The Planning Commission reviewed the project in October. No members of the public spoke on the item, and the Planning Commission voted 3-0 to recommend city council approval of the project. Some background information, the project site is located within the previously approved Treasure Homes 2 tentative subdivision map site that was approved by city council in 2018. This approved tentative subdivision map is consistent with the allowed density range and the proposed RD7 zoning. This approved tentative subdivision map would continue to be valid. As I mentioned pursuant to SB 330, cities are prohibited from rezoning residential to non-residential uses unless another site is rezoned to accommodate that number of potential units lost. So, in order to approve that Stathos Self-Storage Project as proposed, the Treasure Homes Project was submitted in conjunction with that application. Approval of the Stathos Self-Storage Project would result in a reduction of residential capacity of 39 units, and this proposed project would result in an increase in residential capacity of 50 units. Here is the proposed rezone. The project site's general plan land use designation is low-density residential, and the proposed rezone to RD7 is consistent with that designation. Additionally, approval of the Stathos Self-Storage Project, which will be discussed later tonight, would facilitate the Elk Grove Station Project, which would provide for a new passenger rail service between Stockton and Sacramento, which would ultimately benefit the city residents and businesses, which is consistent with general plan policies. No further environmental reviews required pursuant to State Secret Guidelines 15182, and as I mentioned, the Planning Commission does recommend approval of the project. Thank you. This concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Kersh Gessner. Are there any questions from my colleagues? None? Okay, thank you. Seeing none at this time, I'm going to go ahead and declare the public hearing open.
Chair Suon, if I could just kind of, sorry for this scripting notes, but there are applicants that are involved with both these public hearings. I just wanted to make sure there's a provision for the applicants if they'd like to address the council for public comment opens.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you for that. I'd like to invite the applicant, if they'd like to come up to speak. I'm seeing heads shaking. Okay. All right. We coerce you.
Good evening, Councilmembers. My name is Ryan Smith. I'm the applicant, and I think I'll maybe answer questions on the next gen item that's tied to, so.
Sounds good. Thank you. Okay, now, I'll declare the public hearing open. Invite any members of the public if they'd like to come and speak. I don't see any signed up. Mr. Clerk, am I, okay?
You are correct.
All right. Having, seeing none, I'll close the public comment opportunity and look for council deliberation and direction.
I think based on the recommended action, I'd like to recommend that the council conduct a public hearing to receive information from staff and comments from the public, and then introduce and waive the full reading by substitution of title only, in ordinance finding no further environmental reviews required for Treasure Homes Rezone Project under State Secret Guidelines, and amending the Elk Grove zoning map for the project.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion carries. Next item.
And before we go on, just to touch base with the council, we are kind of in some new territory for our ordinances now going forward. We can actually take those as a motion and a second and move those forward, not required to read those full titles. So, once we have that parity going on with what's posted online. So, just for future reference, usually, once I don't put the yellow highlight on there, we're good. So, motion and a second carries it.
Hello again.
Hello. So, this item 8.2 is the Stathos Self-Storage Project. The proposed project includes a general plan amendment from low-density residential to employment center, a corresponding rezone from RD5 to Industrial Office Park, MP, a conditionally used permit, and a major design review with deviation for a new personal storage facility. The project also includes a tree permit for the removal of trees of local importance. The 7.71-acre project site is located on the north side of Elk Grove Boulevard, west of Bruceville Road. The site is currently undeveloped. Surrounding existing uses include the Good Shepherd Catholic Church Parking Lot and Single Family Residence to the immediate north, Single Family Residence is further to the north across Kilconnell Drive, the Carlton Senior Living Facility and Single Family Residence to the east, Single Family Residence to the south across Elk Grove Boulevard, the Good Shepherd Catholic Church, St. Elizabeth and Seaton Catholic School, and the Laguna Creek Sports Club to the west, as well as the South Lichtenberger Park to the northwest. The Planning Commission reviewed the item on October 5th. Two residents spoke to request that the applicant provide an access easement to the four residential properties directly to the east along Fox Cliff Way and Tarbert Drive to allow for those landscape setback area to be used for the benefit of those residences within their side yards, and not require that the applicant construct a solid wall along that eastern property line. While the applicant and the Planning Commission supported the idea and concept, staff did identify a potential concern for an access easement due to the existing proposed drainage facilities and a bio-retention facility within that landscape corridor. Ultimately, the Planning Commission voted 3-0 to recommend city council approval of the project, but they did direct staff to further investigate the feasibility of providing that access easement. Upon further review by the applicant, the applicant determined that it is not feasible to grant those access rights to the adjacent neighbor due to the location of the storm drain and the bio-retention facilities on the proposed site plan, and staff does agree with that assessment. There are concerns that would allow the drainage and grassy swales to be utilized as part of private yards of the adjacent residential properties. Here's a cross-section of that area for reference. The 25-foot landscape setback area would include a solid wall, as well as perimeter tree screening in between the solid wall and the proposed building on the site. Some background information, in 2014, the city council rezoned the project site from AR2 and AR10 to RD5, and approved a tentative subdivision map to subdivide the site for a single-unit residential development. That tentative subdivision map has since expired and was never finalized. As I mentioned, in order to approve the project as proposed, the Treasure Homes Rezone was submitted concurrently, which was approved by council tonight, and that rezone accommodated the potential number of lost units if this project is approved. The San Joaquin Joint Powers Authority and the San Joaquin Regional Rail Commission, which managed the Amtrak-San Joaquin and the Altamont Corridor Express, the ACE, they are partnering on a project known as the Valley Rail Sacramento Extension Project, and this expansion would propose new rail stations and train track improvements along the Union Pacific Railroad Sacramento subdivision. As part of the project, they would construct a passenger rail station and siding track in the city of Elk Grove to be located on Dwight Road. The surface parking area of the Elk Grove Station would be constructed on a three-acre site that is currently operating as the RV parking lot for the adjacent self-storage facility on Dwight Road, the Laguna Self-Storage, and that is owned by the current project applicant. The applicant has entered in a purchase and sale agreement with the rail authority for the purchase of his property, and approval of the project tonight would provide for a replacement location for the loss of the Laguna Self-Storage Facilities and facilitate the Elk Grove Passenger Rail Station. The project includes a general plan amendment from low-density residential to employment center and a rezone from RD5 to MP. As proposed, the use is a conditionally allowed use, and the proposed project would be consistent with the general plan. Approval of the project would provide for portions of an existing personal, excuse me, existing personal storage facility to relocate the project, helping facilitate the development of that Elk Grove Station Project as it identified in the general plan policy, specifically Policy MOB 5-11. The project includes a request to construct an approximately 160,000-square-foot self-storage facility consisting of six buildings and a two-story office managers' residence building. In addition to the self-storage facility, the project also includes future construction of two standard storage buildings in the center of the site, and in the interim, they would be utilized for RV storage. The proposed project would have minimal impacts on the surrounding neighborhoods and is compatible with the surrounding land uses. Here's the proposed site plan. The two-story managers' building would be located along Elk Grove Boulevard. The project includes a 25-foot landscape area adjacent to the existing residences along the eastern boundary, and there are both covered and uncovered parking spaces for RV storage. Access to the project site would be through a new driveway from Elk Grove Boulevard. The driveway would lead to a new parking area with seven parking spaces, as well as a security gate, which would be installed at the entrance to the storage facility. There are emergency vehicle accesses along Tarbert Drive and Fox Cliff Way on the northeastern boundary of the project site that would also be restricted access. The project does include a designer deviation for the side and rear setback areas along the western and northern property lines. This is based on concerns identified by the police department relative to the unintended site access and overall security of the site. Here are the proposed elevations of the offices and managers' suites along Elk Grove Boulevard. The proposed architecture is a contemporary design, including classic design elements. The storage elevations include CMU walls and a standing seam metal roof with metal roll-up doors. Here are the proposed renderings looking north from Elk Grove Boulevard at the project entrance. The project includes a tree removal permit, which would remove all 72 trees on site, including 65 trees of local importance. When the application was first submitted, staff did discuss design modifications with the applicant, hoping to possibly integrate some of the existing trees onto the project design. However, the overall configuration of the site proposed some challenges, including safety issues, as well as potential trespassing and loitering as raised by the police department, as well as possible concerns related to trespassing and loitering, and weeds and rubbish collection. Additionally, the trees could potentially create a liability issue for the applicant due to the potential impact on the vehicles. Therefore, in coordination with the police department and the applicant, the proposed site design addresses those long-term safety and maintenance concerns. The project is subject to the mitigation requirements for tree removals. The Planning Department prepared an initial study mitigating negative declaration for the project, which determined that the project would not result in any environmental impacts that could not be mitigated to a less than significant level. The document was circulated for a 30-day public review period in October, and during that public review period, we did receive four public comments. The comments did not alter the conclusions of the document. The Planning Commission recommends approval The Planning Commission recommends approval of the project. This concludes my presentation. I'm available for questions, and the applicant is also available to answer any questions that you have.
Great, thank you. Again, I'd like to my colleagues for any questions at this time. Any questions? Councilmember Robles, you good? Okay, I do have a quick question regarding traffic, and we talked briefly about this. If you could just, for public comment purposes, whether there's a need for a deceleration lane based on traffic counts?
So, the need for a right-turn pocket deceleration lane was evaluated by staff during the project review, and trip generation analysis showed that the peak hour traffic and trips was below the city's threshold for requiring a right-turn pocket?
Okay, thank you very much. With that, I would like to invite the applicant to come on up to speak from the last item. Good evening.
Good evening, councilmembers. Again, my name is Ryan Smith. I'm the applicant. Currently a happy business owner in the city of Elk Grove for more than 20 years. Have two businesses and happy to start my third. So, here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your investing in our city. Any questions for the applicant? No questions at this time. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Okay, with that, I'm going to open up for public comment opportunities. I see one speaker signed up to speak, Mr. Guadalupe Ramirez. Good evening.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Guadalupe Ramirez, and I have a couple of requests. They may have been addressed already, but I'm a neighbor in that area, and I just want to make sure that it's on the record. These are my concerns and concerns that I've heard with several neighbors. So, the first one is the 25-foot easement that's going to be along the eastern area of Fox Cliff and Tarbert, that I'm requesting that that easement not be accessible to the general public. I know in our neighborhood, we have been concerned that that area could lead to crime, and so we want to make sure that it is gated and only accessible through the main entrance of the storage facility, that it has cameras, and that trees are planted along the area so that it's not just a space where they're just going to stock up and store extra things, whatever, that it has landscaping and be kept up, but most of all, that it is not accessible to the general public for the safety of that, of our neighborhood. The other thing is just wanted to confirm that the fence that is going along the eastern section be a masonry fence at least six feet high. I'm not the neighbor that lives right alongside it, so I know those folks are the ones that, you know, their request should be respected more than anything, but I'm thinking at least six feet. And, let's see, apologize here on my notes here. Oh, the emergency vehicle access gate. I am concerned about that gate. I'm asking for a lot of transparency before that gate be installed, that it be not transparent, that it be solid, that it doesn't have a crawl space for toddlers. We have a lot of toddlers in our streets, and we don't want to find out that one of our little ones has crawled underneath it. So, that fence needs to have minimal, minimal space underneath for a child to be able to crawl under it. I've seen some of those emergency access gates that are along Elk Grove Boulevard over there, one, I believe, by the golf course, and the crawl space there is, to me, very questionable. So, I just want to make sure that that's not what's going to happen in our street and our neighborhood. I think that's about it. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you very much. Ms. Kirshkastner, can I ask you to address the comments that were made? Can we pull up, maybe they pull up the section again? Actually, I want to take note. I didn't see any other speakers signed up to speak.
Yes, to address her concerns, here is the proposed section. So, yes, there will be absolutely no public access to the landscape setback area. There will be landscaping between the, yes, a proposed solid masonry wall adjacent to the western property line, excuse me, the eastern property line, with landscaping and bio-retention facility, so it would not be used for storage in any way. Additionally, the emergency access gates will be restricted and will not have access to the public, and the final design will be reviewed and approved by the Planning Department to the satisfaction of the city and the fire department.
So, the EVA gate will be solid, will be a solid gate when you review it?
The final design is subject to city approval, and so we don't have the exact design, but it will be reviewed and will not allow for access through it.
Okay. And then the, you said landscaping, so there's trees. How far are you spacing them, every 10 feet or 15 feet?
They would be required as identified in Title 23, the landscaping section, and I don't have the number in front of me. I think it's, they...
I believe it's every 30 feet, but let me double check it.
As identified in the section, there would not be trees within the bio-retention facility, but they would be located very close to the wall.
The wall, as the section shows, and then no, obviously no public access to that, to that easement as well?
That's correct.
Okay. And then there's cameras, so there are cameras on site?
Yes, so there will be security and cameras all along and throughout the site.
Okay, very good. Okay, well, Mr. Jordan, while you're looking at, we'll move...
Sorry, I found it. Yes, it's every 30 feet on center.
Okay, very good. Thank you. I hope that, Ms. Ramirez, I hope that gives you some clarity and some better idea and comfort. Okay, thank you. Again, I didn't see any speakers signed up to speak, and so I was going to go ahead and close public comment, invite the applicant back up for any questions. I do have one. If, councilmembers, do you have any questions or comments for the applicant? Mr. Smith, if you want to come back up, please.
Not so much questions. I mean, I guess, and we're not deliberating yet, so I'll just wait.
Okay, very good. Just a quick question on regarding the cameras on site for security. Would you be okay or willing to connect those cameras to our real-time information center for the police department? That would provide, it's good for you too, because it's, that would allow our police department to see in real time if anything were to happen there?
Yes, yes, of course.
Okay.
That's not a problem.
That'd be great. And Chief, is that something we could do? Okay.
Yes, we absolutely can. We can, we'll work with you and the city to identify when and where we can connect.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Okay.
I had one question, and it's probably not associated with the overall working, because I like the safety aspect of having the cameras being connected to the real-time information center, and having that commitment and working with PD to make sure that that happens is really good. Because anytime we put a new, in this case, train stop, train station, we want to make sure that there's, that all the mitigations or concerns that were raised by the constituents are being addressed, because I think what, I believe what they had raised was not too far beyond the pale. And the one part that I think that is really helpful is making sure that we have the right sort of barrier or fencing to avoid that unforeseen circumstance of toddlers walking into that area. It's just, we never expect for it to happen, but we just don't want to have that time to happen and occur and say, I wish we would have addressed it at the time we would have addressed it. I think that creates a more safer environment for the upcoming facility that's being constructed there. I think it helps not only for everyone involved. So, I just, that's one of my things I just wanted to put out there for, just for consideration.
Yes, yeah, the gates will be cameras. We'll have cameras on the EVA gates, and then we'll work with staff and planning to ensure that the gates are constructed adequately for safety for toddlers and children, and still, you know, for the emergency vehicle access vehicles to be able to use it still, so, yeah.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, I want to declare the public hearing closed and look for council deliberation and direction.
Yeah, so I just wanted to say, like, I understand a little bit of why we have to do this because of the train station, but I've been on the Planning Commission, and we were putting storage units in different areas, and it prevented other opportunities for the districts and for Elk Grove as a whole. Can we just start looking at where we're putting this strategically in residential areas that have been developed already? And I just say that because I've seen it where there's other projects that come before us or applicants that come before us that appeal, and it makes the process just a little bit more difficult, because there's projects that shouldn't be going in certain areas because of built already around it. Nothing against the project, you know, I understand why we're doing this and what's the need for, for the future train, but, train station, but I just wanted to make sure that we're mindful of the land that we have, especially when we have to, when we have so little of it left right now. So, I just wanted to put that out there. I'm in full support and happy to make the motion to do this, but just for the future reference, looking forward, when it comes to storage units, let's be a little bit more mindful of residential areas, so.
I appreciate those comments, Councilmember Robles. I just wanted to clarify, there was a certain criteria of distance. Was there a criteria for it to be closer, close by the relocation? Or was this just a market transaction, a willing seller, willing buyer?
Yeah, this is something that the applicant brought forward to us. They chose the site, and they brought it forward as a potential replacement for the existing site.
Yeah.
Yeah. I definitely just wanted to put it out there, just because we have limited land, and we want to just make sure that we're planning stuff around the areas in a methodical manner. But again, I'm happy to make the motion to have this go forward.
You can just read the highlighted part?
Excuse me, councilmember Sarah Kirshkastner. Just wanted to note that I recommend that you add part to your motion for the addition of the section of the landscape area that was shown in the PowerPoint presentation, as well as a condition requiring them to coordinate the camera with the police department and the city.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm looking, can I just read this right up here? Because I'm looking at it over here, and I can't find it. Do you have it in there? Thank you. All right. So, move to adopt the resolution adopting the initial study mitigation, negative declaration and mitigation monitoring reporting program.
You can just read the highlighted portion.
Oh, the highlighted portion, staff move to recommend the resolution and ordinance?
Yes, but adding Ms. Kirshkastner's corrections to add the section and the connection of the R-TIC to the camera.
Yes, exactly what, exactly what Councilman Siewin said.
I'll second it.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next item.
That'll take us into Section 9, irregular agenda action items recommendations, starting with item 9.1, which is to receive and file the Elk Grove Tourism Marketing District annual report for fiscal year 2022-23.
Good evening, councilmembers. I'm Kristin Lawrence, your Public Affairs Manager and a member of the Explore Elk Grove Board of Directors. In 2015, the Elk Grove City Council formed the Elk Grove Tourism and Marketing District and a nonprofit owners' association known as Visit Elk Grove in collaboration with local hotels. The purpose behind this endeavor is remain consistent with the city council's goals to promote a vibrant local economy that includes events and experiences for residents and visitors that enhance Elk Grove's quality of life. Each year since its formation, Visit Elk Grove, doing business today as Explore Elk Grove, has provided an annual update to the council that provides insights on their projects and progress, and tonight, we're back for that annual visit. As a member of Explore Elk Grove's board for two years now, I've been impressed with the results from this organization and its hard-working team. To get a sense for what they've been up to this year, we're going to play a short video for you first, and then their executive director, Erin Vow, will come up to complete tonight's presentation. Thank you for your continued support for this work. Jason, if you can help me roll that video, that'd be great. Thank you.
Yeah, let's see what's going on here. So...
Welcome.
Hello.
Yeah, I'm going to give a round of applause for that. Good stuff.
Not sure how I got off track with the video, but thank you very much. I'm Erin Vow, the executive director of Explore Elk Grove. I know many of you here in the room today. First, I want to thank the city and council members for allowing me to present our tourism report on behalf of the Tourism Marketing District of Elk Grove. As you know, tourism has a positive impact on the city's community and economy, and the video highlighted some key metrics, achievements, and community benefits, and overall economic impact. Tonight's report will dive a little bit deeper and cover insights into the city's tourism performance over the past fiscal year.
And Ms. Vow, there's also a keyboard in the podium. If you pull that out, and then there'll be the arrow keys on the right, and that should help you navigate.
That's easier.
There we go.
So, before I start, I want to acknowledge our Board of Directors. We have board members that represent a number of hotel properties here in the community, from Mr. Linton at Extended State of America, Kimberly Albright at the Hilton Garden Inn, Lorena with Town Place Suites, Chris Lawrence of the City of Elk Grove, Chris Franklin with Wilton Rancheria, Mike Wakeman with McConnell State's Winery in Wakeman Ranch, Phil Lewis with CSD, and Yolanda Garcia with Cafe Elk Grove, representing the community, catering community. I really want to also acknowledge the team that I have, which is a very strong team. They're very dedicated, driven, professional, creative, and fun, and they do a lot here for the community and tourism. for the community and tourism in general. So first, we have Casey Fabry with our marketing and event management team, Joy De Vega with Sales and Partnerships, and then Nina Huen with Marketing, Social Media, and Coordination. So I wanted to acknowledge them and let you know who's really behind this team at Explore Elk Grove. Annually, we work hard with sports events rights holders and meeting professionals and event planners across the region, the community, as well as the state. We offer several nonstop, one-stop-shop services that streamline the booking process, add value to the attendee experience, and bottom line for all event planners. A few key results from this past year fiscal year include direct business sales of $4.7 million, 2,300 jobs supported, $300,000 in local taxes, and about $27,000 attendees. And that's for just 36 events that we tracked and that we partnered with this last fiscal year. We will continue to work with local, regional, and statewide organizers. Our proactive sales efforts and approach for small market meetings, sports travel, and group travel will continue to grow these numbers while we deliver return on investment for our stakeholders and the community. Going into some of the annual tourism highlights, for lodging, we had a 7% increase in average daily room rate this last year. That's $153 for the average daily rate. An 8% increase in revenue per occupied room at about $122 per occupied room, and then a 3% increase in demand and $29.8 million in guest room revenue in here in Elk Grove, which is 11% increase from the last fiscal year. So it is a vital industry for our community and plays a key role in community development. And we look forward to continuing to partner with the community and our hotels to ensure that we're filling the rooms to generate more revenue and tax dollars for the City of Elk Grove. So you might be wondering, who are our visitors? The largest area are boomers and Gen X, followed by millennials. And 27% of our visitors have an income level of 150,000 to 150,000. 21% are in 50,000 to 100,000 level, and 17,000 have an income level of less than 50,000. So we have a well-balanced, diverse group of individuals that are coming, visiting, staying the night, and spending money in Elk Grove. Next up, where are they coming from? The top origin states are California at 70%, Nevada 5.8%, Oregon 3.3%, Washington 2.7%, and Texas at about 2.4%, with Arizona slightly behind. Our top origin DMAs include San Francisco in the Bay Area, Sacramento Stockton Modesto, Fresno, Los Angeles, and Reno. On average, they're staying two days in Elk Grove. 75% of our visitors are staying overnight, and 33% are repeat. So we're seeing a great number of new visitors into the community as well. We were able to collect some new data this year from Chan's Union. And in 2023 year-to-date spending, there's been $125.3 million spent by visitors in Elk Grove alone, $66 per transaction on average, and 1.9 million transactions. Fiscal year 22-23, there was 169.9 million spent here in Elk Grove. And then the leisure and hospitality jobs in Sacramento area are about 113,000 throughout the county. Tourists spending money at local businesses help create additional jobs, generate business income, and support local service providers. When visitors are spending money, they are generating tax revenue for our community, increasing the flow of money throughout our local economy. This past fiscal year, we connected with visitors in the community through marketing efforts, advertising, public relations, and community relations. Our website and marketing efforts increased by 40% in website traffic. There were 78% new users, 132% increase in page views, and 21% increase in organic website traffic. We distributed 26 newsletters and announcements, which reached 117,000 emails, with the average 51% open rate and 8.5% click-to-open ratio rate, which is above industry standards. For social media, it continues to grow and reach views and followers. Facebook's increased by 12.1% with a reach of an increase by 23%. And Instagram increased in followers by 22%. YouTube and LinkedIn continue to grow substantially as well. For media and campaigns, we continue to be successful in driving earned media coverage. We regularly pitch content, new stories, and send out press releases for different events that are happening in the community that we're producing or that our partners might be producing. We had 51 pieces of coverage, which was a combined 1 million views between print and online. We partnered with Threshold 360 the last few years and have over 40 businesses that we provided free 360 tours for. Those have generated 1.5 million Google views for businesses here in the community, 629,000 unique views or users, and 237,000 engagements. That's $55,000 in earned media coverage. In December, we introduced our new sports travel video, which I'd like to share with you now. Does it look like it's going to play? But if you go to our YouTube channel, you'll see it. Or on our sports page on our website, it'll play. So it's a really good overall view of the City of Elk Grove, all the sports facilities from the Aquatic Center, Bartholomew Sports Park, Row, the Equestrian Centers that are really activated with youth, seniors, playing, enjoying, and really seeing what the quality of life feels here in Elk Grove is. And we're taking that on the road with us this spring to Sports Travel Association's trade show in Portland. It's a national organization that brings together destinations and the sports events rights holders. So we're going to share that new video, as well as our sports facility guide, with our one-on-one targeted meetings that we will have with these planners, hopefully to encourage them to want to bring in new business to Elk Grove, which will generate tax dollars and have an opportunity for our community to participate as well. Finally, we have had a number of signature events the past fiscal year, including Unquarted Uncapped, Halla Palooza, our hospitality meetup with CSD in Flatland, our Annual Tourism Summit, and many, many more, which, right now, we're reporting on last fiscal year, but this fiscal year, we've had much more, which you probably have seen, the Main Street Stroll, the SacBrew Bikes, Halla Palooza. We assisted with Pitch Elk Grove, and a few other things that really not only enhance the visitor experience, but also the community, which we really like to support and be a part of. So moving forward, we will continue to deliver high-quality events that are visitor and community centric. The partnerships that we have formed and that we continue to build on are crucial, and the success of each event is really important to us, and we can't do it without our partners and sponsors. So from Wilton Rancheria to CSD, the City of Elk Grove, a number of organizations that we're always just trying to partner with and create something different are huge value to us in our organization. So looking forward, our team has been hard work, hard at work all year round on sales initiatives, marketing campaigns, signature events, and community and public relations. A few new projects that we're working on to accomplish in this current fiscal year include our modification of our management district plan, wayfinding signage for our winery and brewery scene, and a citywide leisure travel video that we'll hopefully share with you next year and hope it'll work. If not, check us out on YouTube at Explore Elk Grove. And we continue to move the needle, and we value your support and the city's support along the way. I appreciate your time this evening, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. I look to my colleagues. Any questions or comments? Councilmember Robles?
Erin, I just want to say thank you. You're doing an amazing job and staff. You guys are really putting it on the map. I've seen it growing on Instagram, and I see it on LinkedIn a lot. And every event that Explore Elk Grove puts on, it's an amazing event. And it continues to draw interest. And it's funny, because I'm seeing a lot of these reels, and they're saying it's Sacramento. It's like, no, it's Elk Grove. So that's cool. And I'm excited to see the video. I'll actually watch it on YouTube, because I believe it was last week, Elk Grove Soccer Club, they had, they hosted their tournament, and they were used using all of Bartholomew Parks soccer courts and or soccer fields. There you go, soccer fields. And I think they said they had about over 20,000 people come into the L City of Elk Grove because of all the clubs, and then all the parents and all the kids that were there. So I'm excited to see that. And then excited to see the amount that we've made in just tax revenues from this fiscal, this year. That's insane. And it's only going to continue to grow. So I look forward for future projects, and we're going to be working on a hotel. So I'm looking forward for that, and making sure that we provide what we need here, one, as a city, but also to be a destination city. So thank you for the work that you're doing.
Thank you.
Councilman Brewer?
Yeah, I mean, roughly $170 million spent by visitors who come to Elk Grove for various events, shopping, whatnot. For the events that are being held, you're looking at $4.7 million in direct business sales, jobs being supported, 2,300 jobs. That's a big testament to to the work that that your team is doing, Ms. Vow, along with the partnership that we have with the city, and especially the work that we're doing with Mr. Don and the Economic Development Team. It's, it shows that we are, that we are really putting our best foot out there and showing what Elk Grove has to offer for people to come, post up shop, open up a new business, live, raise a family here, have tournaments here, recreational, competitive. We're creating these opportunities. And then on top of that, the work that we're doing in attracting new businesses, new restaurants, new breweries, new wineries, and really showing that that we really embrace variety and wanting people to come here and not not just come here and go, but come back again and again and find that Elk Grove is a place that they want to hang out on, hang out on weekends. That's the winning part. And the events that Explore Elk Grove holds every week is amazing. And the campaign that you're doing on the Main Street campaign, along with the, in coordination with the city, is a really good campaign. It's because we're really showing not only what we have to offer in the historical district, but when they come, when they leave the historical district, they find that the city offers so much more. And that's a testament to the work that that is being done by you and your team. And I want to thank you for that.
Thank you.
Ms. Vow, I also want to thank you for your partnership. You and your and your staff are, have always been very professional, organized, creative. I love the partnership that our city has with you and your team. You continue to bring, as you mentioned, high-quality events that are original and enjoyed by all. So we look forward to this coming year, in which you have to have in store for us. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'm going to just do a quick formality, because I think there's, I'm going to open public comment opportunity. There's nobody signed up to speak, and it's pretty empty. Yeah. So I'm a close public comment opportunity. I saw that, too. So anyway, thank you so much for all your hard work. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. This is a receive and file item. So we'll move on to item 9.2. Mr. Clerk?
And item 9.2 is to receive a presentation on the Support Local Elk Grove marketing campaign.
Good evening, Councilmembers.
Hi.
Thank you so much for having me today. My name is Sarah Rodriguez, and I am an Economic Development Specialist here at the City of Elk Grove. I'm here to speak with you all today about the Support Local Elk Grove campaign. So the Support Local Elk Grove campaign started in August of 2021 as a partnership between the City of Elk Grove, Explore Elk Grove, Erin's team here, and the Chamber. And it was really to inspire residents to shop at their favorite local businesses, to discover new favorites, and to rediscover everything that Elk Grove has to offer. A big way that we do this is through our e-Gift Card program. Jason mentioned it a little bit earlier, but the e-Gift Card is, can be purchased on our website and then used at all the local participating businesses here in Elk Grove. It really helps to expand the customer base of our local businesses. 51% of new businesses, excuse me, 51% of the cardholders actually try new businesses when they have a gift card. So expanding the customer base of our entrepreneurs is really important and increases our revenue. Along with that increase in revenue is also an increase in our sales tax revenue, which helps fund community services, like our fire department, police department, our road maintenance, all those services. So residents also benefit, and so do visitors, everybody who uses the services. So really, just a win-win scenario all around, definitely a worthy cause that the city wants to continue to support. This year, we wanted to take a step back and kind of look at that campaign though, look at it with fresh, new eyes, look at what's really been successful over the years since it started, continue to do those, obviously, but also reevaluate and reimagine ways that we can be even better. So one of the key aspects is our partnerships. So this campaign is done not only with the city, but also Explore Elk Grove and the Elk Grove Chamber of Commerce. It's really important that we continue to do that partnership. We want to show a united front and have a joint effort. It allows us to meet our goals easily, because obviously, we have different connections as the three partnerships, so partner members, excuse me. We also wanted to take a look at our logo and our name of the campaign. So formerly, you might have known this campaign as the Why Buy Local campaign. Those two logos on the left there may seem familiar. So it was really important for us to continue to have some continuity. We wanted people that were already familiar with the campaign to not feel like this was a brand-new campaign. We did want to continue brand recognition. So to keep it familiar, we kept a similar color scheme there. We also kept the text similar, and we kept the speech bubble. So initially, we were asking a question, why buy local? Now, the speech bubble is really answering that question, why buy local? Because it supports local Elk Grove. Just more actionable. We thought that was important. We also included a heart in the center of the logo, just to play off the idea that your heart is where your home is, and included a bow so that the speech bubble kind of appeared like a, like a present, like a gift. So with a new name comes a new URL. You see now, our new URL is supportlocaleg.org. The old URL will take you, also redirect you to the website, so no lost visitors there. And we're also focusing on QR codes. So you can see an example of our ad. We have a QR code there. We find that people are a lot more familiar with QR codes now than ever before. So we really want to make sure that those continue on in our advertisements. We also streamlined the process. That's probably one of the biggest changes we made. So when onboarding our businesses, it's important that the messaging is really clear and the process is really streamlined. So what we were hearing from businesses was that the local pass was a bit confusing. It was requiring businesses to kind of use two different platforms. It was requiring them to sign up with Yifty, our gift card platform that we continue to use. And then it was also having them put their deals and their promotions on a separate platform. We now streamlined it. It's all with Yifty. You can put promotions and deals directly on the gift card itself. Businesses just have to fill out a very short, quick form. So just a lot more streamlined. And then another thing I wanted to point out was that we have a new focus on enterprise opportunities. And what that means is large businesses, large organizations typically buy high quantities of gifts for their employees during the holidays. And sometimes that's Visa gift cards, that's Starbucks gift cards, and we want them to use the Elk Grove e-Gift Card. So we've been reaching out to those larger Elk Grove businesses to see if that can be a possibility this holiday season. So this campaign is really a year-round campaign. We're always promoting it. Businesses can always onboard, no matter what time of year. The e-Gift Card can be purchased at any point, but there is an extra push done at the holiday season, which is, you know, now Valentine's Day. So that's like January, February timeframe, and then back to school time. So we have a two-part campaign plan, one being the onboarding process of businesses, right? Because the more businesses that participate, the more enticing the gift card looks to people who might want to buy it. So we began that push in October. That was our focus. We started that push with an email outreach to all the businesses in Elk Grove who provided us with an email and their licensing application or their reapplication. We split up our calls. We also, sorry, we did a human outreach. We called all the businesses in Elk Grove. We split that amongst our three organizations, our three partners. And we created a script so that the messaging that was going to businesses was really uniform. That was important. That was important to us, to make it uniform, no matter who was calling. We have started doing video testimonials. Explore Elk Grove is really great at doing those, just taping the businesses that are already benefiting from the program so that businesses that aren't yet on it can see all the benefits that they're missing out on and come onboard. Not too long ago, we participated in the Business Walk that the Chamber put on, so really just face-to-face connection with our business owners and managers and letting them know more about the campaign. And we have recently ordered some window clings that we will be distributing to our businesses as well. So like I said, we just started the conversation about how we were going to revamp this campaign in September of 2023, so not that long ago. And at the start of that conversation, we had 52 businesses that were signed up for the card. In just a couple of months, we've had a 35% increase. So now we have 70 participating businesses with a lot in the pipeline. So we are expecting that to grow significantly. So as I mentioned, this is a two-part plan. So October was onboarding and November is increasing e-Gift Card sales. That's our new focus. We're doing this with our press release and email messaging. If you are on our email list, which you all should be, if you're not, let me know. An email went out yesterday about the campaign and the mission and more information about how to buy the gift cards. We're also tabling at various events, so you can see Joy and I there at the Giant Pumpkin Festival, but there's a lot of other events that we have and will be tabling at. We are also, the three organizations are using their social media platforms to really promote the event. We're also going to be utilizing print and digital ads to promote the e-Gift Card sales as well. So again, this push for e-Gift Card sales has really started around the November timeframe because our first focus was onboarding businesses. And we've already received over $3,000 extra in e-Gift Card sales in just that short amount of time. So this really concludes my presentation. I think this campaign has a lot to offer the city. I've only been here for a short amount of time and I've already been able to see all of the businesses that are really benefiting from this. I'm a resident here, so I'm excited that something like this exists. And I hope that you learned a little bit more about the campaign and the efforts that are behind it, and I'm available for any questions you might have. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much. I'm going to open up for a public comment opportunity, see if anyone signed up to speak. Seeing no one sign up to speak, I'm going to go ahead and close the public comment opportunity and look to my colleagues for any comments or direction.
Yeah. Thank you for your first presentation.
Yeah.
It was super good and I'm expecting some e-Gift Cards, okay? Again, my council colleagues, we're going to reinvest in the city, you know, we're going to reinvest, so thank you for that and thank you for the presentation. I'm excited. I use QR codes, so definitely going to be looking at.
Well, there's one right here.
I know. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you for the presentation. This was really good, very informative, especially in knowing how to access the e-cards and seeing the number of participants right now is really cool. Because as we enter, we're in the holiday season already and it feels like we've moved hyperspeed into Christmas. And so this announcement comes at a great time and hoping that people will follow the link to the site and that we offer it anywhere and everywhere possible, along with the QR code. Because it's like Councilmember Robles, I've found that using QR codes are very convenient nowadays, especially if I'm trying to access information or make purchases now. They're very easy if you are confident in your abilities to not have your identity hacked because I know that's the big thing people have fears about, but I think this is a safe way of shopping and a safe way of being able to participate and have fun in this season. And to see that we're full-grown, invested in this program many years into it is really cool to see. So thank you.
Thank you.
Likewise, thank you so much for this presentation and information. You and the entire city team, along with our partners, have put a lot of work into this campaign, it's obvious. And so it's nice to see you've already had some successes with more businesses signing up. And I'm just pleasantly surprised you're a resident here, so that's fantastic.
Yeah, of course.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
You bet. Thank you. Okay, move on to our next item, 9.3. Mr. Clerk?
And to receive an update on legislation passed in 2023.
Good evening.
Good evening, council members. So I am Crystal Lovelizard. I am the city's Community Engagement and Government Relations Manager. So one of my roles here at the city is to monitor proposed bills and look out for the best interest of the Elk Grove. Of the 2,600 bills introduced this year, 1,046 made it to the governor's desk. Governor Newsom vetoed 156 and signed 890 into law. This presentation will briefly review a few notable new laws. So we use the City of Elk Grove's legislative principles as guidance. This resource is updated every two years with input from numerous city departments. A reminder that the California Legislature, not that you need the reminder, but the California Legislature convenes in two-year sessions. What I'm presenting today are bills passed during the first year. Many bills of interest have been carried over into a second year. Some of the major factors that influenced the legislature this year are listed on this slide. As you know, housing and homelessness was a major topic that you'll see reflected in this presentation. So as I mentioned, Governor Newsom signed an extensive housing bill package. I'm going to quickly touch on a few of these bills, particularly the ones that impact Elk Grove. So first up, SB 4. This bill created a by-right, sequo exempt, time-limited approval process closely modeled on SB 35 and AB 2011. This applies to affordable housing projects on land owned by religious organizations and higher education institutions. Speaking about SB 35, this new bill, SB 423, extends the SB 35 sunset date from 2026 to 2036 and expands it in several ways, including a reduction in labor requirements, it now applies to certain areas within the coastal zone, is triggered by housing element non-compliance, and 100% below market rate housing can qualify for streamlining as long as they charge rent that is consistent with the maximum rent level stipulated, and a public hearing is required in certain geographic areas. Okay. Accessory and dwelling units, also referred to as ADUs and granny flats, have been available in California but only as rentals. This new law, AB 1033, is giving Californians the opportunities to buy and sell them similar to condominiums. AB 1332 requires cities and counties to have a program for pre-approved ADU plans, which Elk Grove already has. AB 821 creates a notification process and time limit of 180 days for jurisdictions to align their zoning code with their land use element of the general plan when there is a live project application. This bill also builds on an existing law that applies to projects that are at least 2/3 residential and to allow mixed use in other projects to proceed if the city's zoning code is inconsistent with the housing elements. So AB 901 creates a voluntary program that allows cities to pay into a trust managed by the state to fund affordable housing development in their respective communities. AB 1449 adds a new exemption, not only for the entitlement of qualifying affordable housing, but also for the actions leading up to and following project approval, including general plan amendments and rezonings, the lease or sale of property, and financing decisions. As you've probably heard, 2023 was the year for Surplus Land Act bills. While numerous bills were considered, these two were signed into law. Some of the notable amendments relate to leases. It clarifies that leases less than 15 years or leases for property on which no development or demolition will occur are exempt. Small sizes. It increases the small-size exemption for sites up to 1/2 acre that are not contiguous to land owned by the state or local agency used for open space or affordable housing purposes. Affordable housing. It eliminates the obligation to conduct competitive bidding for qualifying affordable housing projects and third-party intermediaries. It allows an agency to transfer property to a third-party intermediary for receiving agency's use. Okay, so prior to AB 1485, in order to intervene in housing-related litigation brought by third parties, the California Department of Justice was required to petition the court for permission to participate in the litigation. So AB 1485 now gives both the Attorney General and HCD an unconditional statutory right to intervene in cases concerning the enforcement of housing laws. AB 1633 was inspired by the San Francisco Board of Supervisors' vote to uphold a sequo appeal of an infill development project, so it now defines two new violations of the Housing Accountability Act. Fun stuff for John. Parking. So AB 1317 requires owners of qualifying residential properties in certain counties to unbundle the cost of parking from the total rent of the housing unit. The law defines unbundled parking as the practice of selling or leasing parking spaces separate from the leases of the residential property. To be subject to this new law, the property must have received a certificate of occupancy on or after January 1st of 2025, include 16 or more residential units, and then be located in one of 10 counties, and Sacramento was one of them, so we are falling within this. AB 894 mandates local agencies must allow shared parking plans if applicable parking is underutilized, and the entities proposing shared parking provide an agreement meeting certain criteria and an explanation of the benefits of the proposal. So new parking stuff. Okay, so AB 1637 requires cities to ensure that the internet, website, and email addresses utilize a .gov domain no later than January 1st, 2029. You're very aware that we have a .org, so this also applies to us. Human trafficking. So SB 14 reclassifies human trafficking of a minor for purposes of a commercial sex act as a serious felony, which would be treated as a strike under California's Three Strikes Law. There were a lot of fentanyl-related bills this session, but not a lot of agreement on how to best address the problem. AB 33 was signed into law. It establishes a 27-person fentanyl addiction and overdose prevention task force to study it further. Okay. AB 1403 addresses the growing crisis of an illegal importation and cells of dangerous fireworks through the creation of a state fire marshal statewide illegal fireworks enforcement action fund at the California Treasury. I swear I'm going fast. SB 447 authorizes the governor's office of Business and Economic Development to remove the travel ban for state employees and establish the Building and Reinforcing Inclusive Diverse Gender Supporting Equity Project. This is familiar. SB 354 authorizes the City of Elk Grove to appoint two members instead of one to the Sacramento Regional Transit District's Board of Directors. Okay, significant changes were made to California's mental health system. SB 326 modernizes the Mental Health Services Act. Looking ahead to 2024, California voters will have the opportunity to vote on the Behavioral Health Services Bond Act measure, a $6.38 billion bond measure to fund new mental health treatment and permanent supportive housing units. As we get closer to November of 2024, I imagine we're all going to hear a lot about both ACA I and ACA 13. These constitutional amendments approved by the state lawmakers are going directly to voters and do not need a signature from the governor. So coming to a mailbox near you. Okay. The California Business Roundtable has qualified their measure called the Taxpayer Protection and Government Accountability Act. Unless pulled, it will appear as well on the November 2024 ballots. Passage of this act is concerning as it would place our Measure E, our sales tax measure, funds in jeopardy. And last but not least, the city took a stance on a federal bill as well. Yay. HR 3557, this bill has not yet passed. It's still in a policy committee, but it is concerning as it dramatically preempts local authority to manage public right-of-ways and land use for telecom infrastructure. So I know this was a lot and I know you're experts, but if you have any questions, I welcome them now. There's no public comment.
Thank you for that presentation, Ms. Lazard. Before we go to my colleagues, I'm just going to open up for public comment. And seeing nobody sign up to speak, I will close public comment and I'll defer to my colleagues now.
I think that was 769 bills that we went through. We still got a couple more to go through.
So many good ones.
Thank you for this update. As Councilman Suen said, there's a lot happening in our state. I think many folks sometimes don't realize the ins and outs of government and what's all going there, but this is a really great update, especially for our city, so appreciate
Awesome job, Ms. Lazard. Awesome. Just having us look at all these key pieces of legislation, how it affects the city and in turn affects the state, and connecting the dots on how all of these bills play a larger effect on how we proceed as a city. And seeing how some of these bills, as they become laws, they have delayed implementation dates. So not all of them start on January 1st, 2024. Some of them are pushed back to 2025, and that's helpful because it helps us prepare for these new laws and getting ready for them. But seeing all the dots being connected across the board for mental health, housing, you name it, it's really good to see that we were not only on top of it, but working closely with like-minded organizations to help solidify our stance and to show that, hey, we are standing up for our community, so thank you.
Thank you. Yes, unless otherwise noted, the bills do go into effect January 1st of 2024, but as you note, yes, several of them gave us some more years, including the one about, I'm looking at Nicole over there, the website and email updates. That will sound simple, but it's not.
That's right.
Yeah. Thank you very much for the information that you boiled it all down very quickly, actually. Yeah, the only one, I guess, you know, I think we need to pay careful attention to is the Business Roundtable proposal. On its surface, it looks, might look good, but I think if people dive deeper, a lot of local governments will suffer and ultimately the very businesses that have proposed the measure. So I'd like to see some education, maybe get out in public about that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, that was a receive presentation. Brings us to the next item. Mr. Clerk?
That'll be Section 10, Council Comments, Reports, and Future Agenda Items.
Okay, I'll start with Councilmember Robles.
I attended the regional sand. Nothing to report, and we will be meeting next month.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Brewer?
Sacramento Metro Cable Television Commission meeting is tomorrow at the county chambers, 3 o'clock, actually 3:15, and I will be in attendance as the alternate member for Vice Mayor Speace. That's all I have for report.
All right, thank you. Tomorrow, we have a joint agency meeting with SACOG, Air Quality Management District, RT, and SMUD, all getting together. That's a lot of talking heads in one place, but we'll be trying to work out how we move forward to continue to battle climate change within our respective organizations. With that, I will adjourn the meeting at...
Before we adjourn, Councilman Suen, I just want to say this weekend is Veterans Day, so we will be having our Veterans Day Parade. Please come out and support. Thank you to all the veterans. Thank you to the Marines. Tomorrow is your birthday, so I'll give you that. But thank you to everyone who served. I knew, you know, that we have several members who serve Vice Mayor and then several members on the Planning Commission with Commissioner Murphy and Commissioner Ocon, who've served, so I hope I'm not forgetting. But we also know that there's several staff who've served as well, several Marines and several Coast Guards and Army, and Air Force, I guess we got to include Air Force in there. So I just want to say thank you again and please come out Saturday to support.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Robles. That's a good reminder. Vice Mayor Speace, Councilmember Brewer, and myself will be marching under a city entry. I know you'll be the, what do you call it now?
I'm going to just be walking. I'm going to march with you guys.
You are a grand marshal, I understand, for your service, sir. Okay. But again, thank you for that reminder. I hope everyone does make it out. It's not that long, so please come on out. With that, I will go ahead and adjourn the regular meeting at 8:14 PM. Good night, everybody. With that, I will go ahead and adjourn the regular meeting at 8:14 PM. Good night, everybody. Thank you.